I'm full now, I need to hurry.
All right, Benton County County Commissioners, now it's Texas, open for chair.
Our invocation tonight will be given by Commissioner Mike Duner.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together tonight. Please wrap your hands around us as we make decisions for the county, whether they're good or bad. Please bless all of us to make good decisions and bless us as we move forward. All these things we ask in your name.
Amen. Commissioner Burke, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Rob Cole, Madam Clerk. Ethan Stowe. Gary Cr- Barry Holland. Mike Duner.
Here.
Errol Heath. Have Troy Evans. We do have it all. Next is the approval of the agenda. The motion, second.
Oh.
Motion, Commissioner Arnold, and second by Commissioner Price. Voice vote, please, if you're for the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays? I see none, so we move on, the agenda is approved. Next, we have the citizens' forum. Do we have a list? Is there anyone from the citizens that would like to speak? Okay, Sandy Edwards, you're recognized.
I'm Sandy Edwards, District Attorney. I just wanted to invite all of the listeners, we're gonna have a meeting on Thursday night, this Thursday night at Pizza Hut. And I just greeted from the airport, she's gonna come and she's gonna tell us all about all of the little things that's going on at the airport and life stool. Just kind of give a lot of information and it'll be very casual. I mean, happy that we all too, we're just gonna, everybody order quick, they'll all too. And um, it'll be probably about an hour, I think, so we'll invite them, wait for them.
Thursday, good luck, yeah?
Pizza Hut, James.
Thursday, what time?
Uh, five o'clock, eight six o'clock, some first date.
Okay, anyone else? Next is the.
Sheriff Fries, Sheriff Frye.
That's what we were discussing. We'll do it underneath the next one, okay? Next is the commissioners' forum, do we have a commissioner that would like to speak on any subject? Moving on, is the county mayor, Mayor Wardner. Okay?
I think I've met just about everybody in here tonight. I'm Sheriff Frye, I'm from Henry County. I was asked to come over tonight and speak to y'all briefly about our workhouse program that we have in Henry County. So, I've given each of y'all a couple of handouts. One is, it looks like this, this is the numbers. Not all the numbers since inception of our program, but that is work release numbers, and I'll go over that briefly in just a second. And then the other packet is gonna say Henry County Correctional Work Release Program. And this is the rules and regulations that govern our program in Henry County. This program was started in, before I took office, started in October of 2018. It was started at that point by then Sheriff Monty Blue. It was mirrored after Dyer County's program. And this sort of, this packet is not just, we pick inmates out of the facility to get to go in this program. What happens is, there's an application, you'll be able to see in the back of this, that's why I made y'all all copies, so you look over this. It's got, it's a true application they have to fill out. They send it to my work release coordinator, who is one of my sergeants in the jail. So, they send it to him, he runs a background check. There are certain charges that they cannot be involved in the program, if they're a sex offender, of course, they can't go in. Some of your violent felonies, they can't go in the program. But we partner currently with Euro, PML, and McCartney Produce and ICI in Paris. Programs changed a little bit since when I come in, we were transporting all the inmates to work. And I was like, that's wasting too much manpower, we don't have the manpower to do that anymore. So, I went to all these companies and said, hey, if y'all wanna stay in the program, here's what I need y'all to do. I need you to transcome and pick up and drop off. Perfect, they did it. So, they now come pick up and bring back to us. So, we don't do any of the transporting anymore. Each person that's in the program, they're drug tested weekly. We house them in a separate dorm inside our facility. So, when they started the program, they blocked off one dorm that was thirty-two beds for men. And so, that's where the men go into, they never co-mingle with general population. So, I have an outside door that comes into that, they pull up, they get out there, they pull up, that's where they go out. Each one of them strip searched when they come back in from the program. They can't bring anything back in, they can have tobacco products with, out there at work. They get, I think, one or two packs a week of cigarettes, or a can or two of dip a week, that's what they can have. But in essence, this is how the program works, and it has been very successful in Henry County. They go to work, they're a normal employee at PML and McCartney and ICI, they're a normal employee, they're a W-2 employee. Euro's a little different, they're ten ninety-nine, they're contract laborer at Euro. But at the end of the day, here's how it works, they get their paycheck. From their paycheck, they pay us twenty dollars a day to go out to work. They pay on top of that additional four dollars a day for their ankle monitor. They have a GPS, we use buddy bracelet, so there's monitors set up inside the facilities. If they break that barrier, it sends us an alert, we go find them and we're GPSing. I can tell you, since the inception of the program, one guy's broke the barrier. And he come turned himself back in before we could catch him, so. So, they get their paycheck, they pay us those fees, then the next twenty-five percent of their paycheck goes towards any court cost they may have, whether it's child support, fines, costs, whatever the case may be, they're paying their court fees. The next seventy-five percent goes into a savings account in essence for them, we hold it in their commissary account. They're able to use a hundred dollars a week of that to buy commissary through the jail program commissary. The rest of it is held in that account until they get out. I have had those guys in there that's left with thirty and forty thousand dollars in their pocket. And been debt-free to the court system. Major game changer when those guys leave and they don't owe probation, they don't owe any fines or costs anywhere. And they've got money in their pocket. They don't have to go back to doing what they have been doing, they've got some money to live on, so. I will tell you, since I've been there, now retired, Lieutenant Steve Dean come to me though and said, we're failing these guys and gals. And I said, okay, what are you talking about? He said, well, they're leaving with this money, they're not used to that much money. And so, we have started a life skills program, we partnered with Tomorrow's Hope, they get basic life skills, budgeting, parenting, you name it, basic life skills are given. It's a six-week program, the employers work with us, if they need to miss work for that day or whatever, they understand. And it's been a major game changer as well, so. Can you have a question?
Sheriff, do they, do y'all broke it, because they had it set up where they have the options, when they get out, they still have a job there?
So, yes, so that, good question, that is a major thing is, with each of these companies, when they get out, they still can retain their job. Usually what happens is, they get out, so they get out from us on Tuesday. We do all of our paperwork to get them exited, on Thursday, they're right back to work at whatever place they were working. I've had some of them that are, went out, soon as they went back to work, they were made a supervisor. I had one, Euro, for example, was running a new computer CAD system, whatever they called it. One of my inmates was the only guy that knew how to run it, and so, I mean, soon as he got out, he was right there running that program for them. The revolving doors, I call it, especially of those guys and gals that's been in the program, has really slowed down for us. But a lot of it is because they're paid off, I mean, they're, and they've got this money. They got a place to get a house, they got a place to get them a vehicle, they got them, you know, so, I mean, you can look. So, just this front page alone, you gotta think, some of this was early on, so they didn't have as many inmates in the program. We right now have more inmates in the program than we've ever had, we're sitting at thirty-two inmates in the program right now. But you can see the second page, work release quarterly report. Funds collected for August one of nineteen, November fourteenth of nineteen. So, daily work center fees, that's a twenty dollars a day fee that we collected, was almost twenty-one thousand dollars. Work center clothing, I'll explain that to you, you see, that's eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. What we do, we pay for their clothing up front if they need, and then out of their check, we take a little bit to reimburse ourselves with that. Circuit court fees, you can see, that's fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand dollars collected in that timeframe. Let me say something, most people don't realize this, being in law enforcement, probation, we understand this. Normal people, they get out on probation and they set them up on a payment schedule. That payment schedule through the courts may be fifty dollars a month, twenty-five dollars a month, it takes these guys and gals years to pay that off. With this program, the county is also collecting that money that we would probably never see any other way. I mean, it's, you got people, prime example, my chief deputy got a call, I don't know, it's been a couple of months ago. Mike Wilson, our circuit court clerk, called and told chief, said, hey, I need you, you worked at theft and burglary back in two thousand and five. He said, yeah, okay, you're gonna have to give me more details than that. So, he told him what it was, said, the suspect in that is now in y'all's work program, okay? He has paid back the restitution, beans, he's been in your work program a short period of time, I need you to find the victim. So, Scott goes back and digs, victim's passed, but we found the family and was able to get that restitution money back to that family from a two thousand and five case, so, and he'd been out a lot in between two thousand and five and now, but never paid any of that restitution until he got in the work program. So, it works. And then if you'll jump forward, let's just jump to the last sheet, you can see. This was from January of twenty-two and through the first of April of twenty-two. So, court fees collected during that time period was nine thousand forty-seven dollars. But you can see down here, year-to-date, it's a very bottom line so far, and when we say, when I say year-to-date, we're talking about our fiscal year, July one to June, they had collected over thirty-one thousand dollars in just fines and court fees alone. So, and then you look at work center fees during that time, we collected twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars. Let me say something that's not in these reports, though. Ninety-seven percent of the people in the work program are state inmates. So, as y'all may be aware, you're getting forty-one dollars a day from the state for each state inmate you house. They get in the work program, that's an additional twenty dollars a day on top of that. So, for those state inmates that are in that program, you're gaining sixty-one dollars a day for your county to come back in and help run and offset your budget for your jail. Not all of them are state, but most of them are, and the reason that is, Euro does not want anybody with less than a year's sentence, because it takes them so long to train them up to where they want them, that's what they want. PML's the same way, McCartney's is not that way, McCartney says, I don't care if they got a ten-day sentence, send them to me, I'll train them, we're just pulling orders, that's what we need them to do, and it's worked out. And these people, these factories will tell you, these are some of the best employees that we have. For one, they know they're gonna show up every day, unless they have a court case or something like that, they're coming, they're gonna be there. I've got right now, oh, three or four more places that want employees, I don't have room to house those employees right now. We're currently in the process of a five million, five million dollar grant project that if I get that, we are building our own standalone work center that will be an eighty-bed facility. So, I will jump from thirty workers to eighty workers as quick as I can. Now, where am I gonna get those from, I can tell you. If you don't have a work program in Benton County, I'm pulling them from the sheriff. I'm pulling them from Andy Dixon, sheriff in Carroll County, I'm pulling them from Weekly County, I'm already doing it. If they've got a good worker, they wanna go to work, I have no telling how many letters a week I get out of Benton County Sheriff's Office from guys wanting to come to my program. You got some that's housed over here right now that's been in my program.
So, you're telling me we can put them to jail?
No, I don't have that much room yet. But, but I'm telling, the program not only benefits the inmates, it benefits your community as well, because it, there's a lot of these guys and gals that's never had a job in their life, they've never been, experienced any of this, there's no telling how many we've given their first opportunity to. That's big, that's big.
So, what if you have somebody in there that is on the work program and they have a wife at home with kids, they have a house payment, car payment?
So, here's the deal with the, so, I will tell you. Under the rules, they're not allowed to send that money out. Now, the sheriff, at his discretion, can make allowances here, there, and yonder for that. I've done it once or twice. I've got a gentleman over there at my jail right now, he's a Benton County resident. He wasn't serving time over here, he did his crime in Henry County. He run my deer shed for me, not this past year, year before. Great kid, made some major mistakes, but a great kid. His family called me, I don't know, it's been a few months ago now, called and said, hey, his granddaddy's bad sick, he doesn't have healthcare insurance, he needs this surgery to get a partial lung taken out, but they won't do the surgery unless we pay a big chunk of money up front. So, they said, can he get some of that money? And I was like, let's see what he's got, let me talk to him, so I went and talked to inmate, completely on board. I took ten thousand dollars out of his account and wrote a check to Vanderbilt to help pay for his granddaddy's care. So, there's, there's case, it's case by case when that comes along, you gotta sort of see, you know, what it is. But just to say, every single week, I'm gonna send money out, not happening. It's gotta be something pretty substantial for me to do that.
Sheriff, that, one of the big things that I've noticed in the program, talking to y'all, Bob, and with you, you said yours is never bad. We went down to one town, a couple of places, one woman, we looked at him, is the child support. These women are not having to get over all food stamps, things like that, they carry the kids, but now they're getting the child support that they probably wasn't ever gonna get, or if you're gonna get out and have to pay the fine, it's going back to jail, because they haven't named child support.
That, that's correct.
Well, it's just part of that initial circle out there.
It is, and, so, we do the child support, we send it in, you know, child supports can be set up a multitude of ways. But if it's ordered through the court, to be paid through the court, we take care of. So, we send it, I think the child support payments are collected in Nashville, so, my lady that's the, takes care of all the money for the program, she sends it to wherever it needs to go, she sends it to Nashville, to the child support division. If their, if their fines and costs are in Benton County, she sends their fines and costs to Benton County, if they're in Carroll County, it doesn't matter. It wouldn't matter if they were in Murray, Kentucky, or Cincinnati, Ohio, wherever their fines and costs are, we're gonna make sure their money's getting divvied out where it needs to be divvied out.
Judge Griffey has been very supportive of me, and he has, I called him and said, I've got a man that I'd like to put on the work program, or he may call me and say, would you mind if he went to Henry County work program, because you don't have one, that's money we're losing.
So, yeah, Judge Griffey's a very big proponent of the work program. Sometimes, to the point, I have to tell him, hey, you can't tell him that because he don't qualify for the work program. He would put everybody in the work program if he could, but there's just sometimes they don't qualify, but, but. I, I mean, around us, other places for you to go look, I'm not the the sole man that's doing this. Sheriff Box in Dyer County, I think he was the first one probably in West Tennessee that I know of. Sheriff Jackson in O'Byrne County has it. Sheriff in Gibson County has it, Paul Thomas. That's the only three I know of and other besides me in West Tennessee that has it.
I don't believe it's labeled Paul.
I don't, I don't. I know, and y'all've got some good factories. I think you've got the, I think you've got the the need for, from what I, what I would see. What we don't do, I will tell you this, and you're gonna get this call if you start this. You're gonna get it from, Billy Bob just got arrested, he's sentenced, well, he worked for, I don't know, we'll just say J and S Tree Service, I hope it's not Tree Service over here, but J and S Tree Service, hey, he's my employee, I wanna get him out to work, doesn't work that way. I've had to tell a lot of my buddies that own businesses, little, small businesses, hey, y'all got my guy down there, let him, doesn't work that way. If he wants to go to work, we'll look at getting him in the program, but this is where he's going, to one of these two or three places right now. We don't let him pick and choose.
Sheriff, do you have any females on the work program?
I do, so, when I first started, we did not. We had no females in the program whatsoever, and I was like, hmm, this is not gonna end well. So, I felt like we were sort of discriminating. And so, McCartney's called out of blue, said, hey, we need employees, and I'm like, perfect. Because we will not send male and female inmates to the same place. Obvious reasons, they're coming back, it's just, it doesn't ever work out, they tried that in the past, didn't work. So, McCartney's, and we had some females that were eligible for the program under their standards, because they didn't care what type of sentence they had. So, we started sending, right now, I think I've got four women in the program. That's a problem for me, is because my housing for women, I've got one women cell. So, when we started sending women, I have to use a holding cell that I've transformed into a work center cell. The most, I can have six at a time, and that's another reason I want that, that work program, or that work center built, is because then, Fifty Ham House, they're wanting some workers. I could put more women in there really quick into this program. And, and then at the end of the day, too, they're reducing their sentences, too, they're getting a two-for-one at that point, so it's helping them get out quicker. Can we talk a little bit about money?
Sheriff, they, both state inmates, these are not inmates that you're going to only get transferred from you, or just go Henry County, and they're getting out, sentenced over eleven twenty-nine, six months, state inmates.
That's correct.
So, they're actually local people, not just only or some of the other prisoners down there working for our house, it's just somebody that's.
Strictly, every, well, ninety-five percent of them, yeah, I would say ninety-five, ballparkish, are Henry County inmates that have got a state sentence more than eleven twenty-nine. If I need more bodies, if we've got slots, then that's when I start reaching out to Sheriff Christopher, Sheriff Dixon, these other counties around me, and pull from the county jails. I do not bring anybody back that's already been sent to a penitentiary. Matter of fact, here was my statement when I, first day I took office and went back to talk to my workers, and I made a believer out of them. You go to work, you get fired from that place of employment, or you get laid down because of a jailhouse infraction, you're on the first bus out. Whether that's to a penitentiary bed, or whether that's to Johnson City, Tennessee, to the county jail, I'm getting rid of you, because I'm giving you opportunity to make something. And if you're not gonna abide by our rules, then I'm getting rid of you, I'm sending you somewhere else. And I'm not gonna send them over here, that's too close. Fayette County, we're big, we're big in with Fayette County, if we got a problem, we send them there. You know, I've been pretty fortunate to get penitentiary beds when we needed them, so, you know, and it took, I've been in office about three months, Lieutenant Dean at the time was over the program, he called me on Saturday morning, I was at National Flea Market, and he said, we got a problem, I said, what's that? He said, I just had seven fail a drug test. Like, all right, lay them down, get them on the first bus out. Within a week, I had them gone. That slowed down my problem, so they, they know now.
I know the work people, y'all through the probation, y'all in Henry County, and some people didn't make it through probation, they ended up going to the jail, getting, they're having service sentences, went into your program.
Right.
Went to Euro, and I think they know who's running that computer, but we might have seen him all the time, but.
Right, you know who it is.
It's a really good program, they work for me, and that's my main thing, say by state inmates, people think we're going to go right on the state grid.
No.
Since he made his loan, he's got over that.
That's correct. So, I'll tell you, I got a gentleman, I was in Decatur County Jail right now. He's a Henry County boy, but he's serving a state sentence in Decatur County Jail. He's working on his application right now, I won't get him back from Decatur County Jail, put him in the program, so. I appreciate it. Who's next?
I just got one question. How many employees does it take to manage the office there at the workhouse program?
All right, so, I have one sergeant that is my work release coordinator. He manages all thirty-two of them right now. You know, I have my regular COs, because they're housed inside my walls, but these guys and gals don't bother you, because they're going to work for ten, twelve hours a day, they're coming back, they're getting a meal, and they're laying down to sleep. So, I mean, you're really not having to do a lot of them, but Thomas Young's my sergeant, he takes care of managing the program. Then Danielle McLean, she's my finance director at Sheriff's Office, she takes care of all the monies that comes in and getting the checks deposited, getting the checks cut out to the different entities that the money's gotta be divvied out to. Then it's me and the mayor. So, I mean, I mean, it's really, I mean, that's, that's what it boils down to, and I mean, I don't do a whole lot with it, I'll tell you. I don't even have a vote in it, who gets in the program and who doesn't get in the program. So, what, way it's set up is, they're one-year, two-year terms. My work release coordinator has a vote, one of my investigators has a vote, my kitchen manager has a vote right now, and there's one other, I can't remember who the other one is. They meet once a month, once every other month, they vote on all the applications. If it's a tie vote, then the mayor breaks the tie vote. And what Mayor Ridgeway's been doing, and we've had him down there a few times, he comes in, he interviews the potential employee like it was a real job interview, and then he makes his decision. I think he's denied one, uh, and that was just a lot of the criminal history background is why I got denied. But that's, that's how it's set up.
I guess I had just pretty much the same question, but I understand that you started in the jail that you have, and I can see how that would be feasible using the same COs and the same staff and all. What do you think about building a new facility and having eight COs and a?
So, looking at the, at the new facility, um. Eighty beds, so what will happen is Sergeant Young will, I will just put him over that facility up there, uh, to run that on a day-to-day basis, but in all actuality. We're not having a kitchen up there, uh, we're gonna, the food will still be cooked in the main building. We'll get some of the, the roll-around hot carts or whatever and take them back and forth, um. I'm thinking that I will have to add five to six employees up there. We'll see if that works.
So, the reason I'm asking that is, I, I think it'll take eight because everybody won't go to work every day, and you're always gonna have to have some COs there regardless.
A- and when I say five to six, that's leaving somebody there all the time in that building, uh. Twenty-four seven, yeah, there'll be somebody there twenty-four seven. But, and the reason I say I don't think it's gonna take you as many as what you think is for the simple fact, I go back and visit my work cells pretty regularly. I'm telling you, if I go back there, if they work night shift and I go back there at two o'clock in the afternoon, I'm having to wake them up. I mean, literally, they come in, they go eat, they go to bed. I have no problems, I mean.
Are we covered by law?
Yes.
Having enough COs?
Yes, so.
That's a good question.
So.
Looking at five or six hundred thousand a year, and the numbers aren't here to do that.
So.
The numbers that you have right now is probably what we'll max out.
But you, but you gotta think about that, what's not in there is your state inmate fee number.
I understand that.
Uh, so, I mean.
But how does the money get the budget, back to the budget? Because what's actually going in the county coffers is a minimum part of that.
Yeah, but you, but you're, when I say your state inmate's fee, so let's just say, so right now, I've got thirty-two inmates in the program. Times forty-one, that's thirteen hundred dollars a day, times three hundred and fifty-six, that's almost a half a million dollars. That I'm bringing in and just state inmate fees right now, just on my work, on my work guys. And I, I actually, I take it back, I did it times forty-one, hold on, thirty-two times sixty-one. That's nineteen fifty-two a day, times three fifty-six, that's almost seven hundred thousand dollars. That might, that those thirty-two, you know, so.
Seven or eight hundred thousand a year coming in.
You know, I can tell you, this is what I've told my county commission. So, this grant we're looking at is five million dollars, it's an eighty-twenty grant, so the mayor's agreed to chip in a million to a million and a half. Conservatively, I've said, give me two years, I have it paid back, and I think I will. Because my numbers are gonna grow that much, and my state numbers are gonna grow that much.
Does the state inmate money stay with the Sheriff's Department?
It sure does.
One hundred percent.
It does, yep.
Difficult to have two counties side by side?
That's, I think so. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, uh, when you say feasible, yeah, I, I don't see a problem with it because. I've got more inmates in right now that are eligible for the work program, I don't have the beds to put them in my work program. I mean, I, I probably got another twenty inmates in my facility right now that I could put in the work program. I don't have any more beds in that work pod, and I can't expand that work pod. My only way to expand my work pod is put a second tier on it, and it's gonna cost me more to put a second tier on than build a whole separate building over there. Which is crazy to me, but when you start, well, and you gotta look at, if I do any. So, the way TCI is set up, which is the governing body for our jails. If you do any renovations to any part of your current facility. And the standards are different from what it was when it was built, then you gotta renovate everything back there. If a, if a, they say now shower stalls gotta be three foot by three foot, and you only got a two foot by two foot. And you, I put my second tier in, then I've gotta go and redo every other shower of my facility. And when you start renovating a jail, it's expensive. So.
Question?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Oh, the, the inmates that qualify for this work release deal, are they misdemeanor charges inmates, they're felons?
They're felons. Yes, sir.
So.
Ninety-five percent of them are felons.
And different, different classes of felons?
Sure, yep, I mean, you're not gonna have any murderers, you're not gonna have, I mean, and that's what's in this, um. This, this sheet right here, I think it's on second page, I think. Inmates inappropriate for work release, um, they've had a, a escape, um. Serious, uh, they've been a criminal act that was instrumental in serious injury or death, uh, a sex offender, a felony ar- or felon arson, um. Deadly weapon was used during a commission of a crime, felony assault, felony robbery, um. So, that's for the most part, domestic assault, misdemeanor domestic assault will keep you out of program, um.
So, actually, what does qualify?
Your, your thefts.
Or felons.
Thefts, drug charges, um, there's still a multitude of, of felonies out there that still qualify. And I think I can speak from, from my jail, and I would say most of us, small rural, uh, communities in, in West Tennessee. Probably seventy-five percent of our convicted felons are drug offenses. I mean, we've all got it, we've all got a drug problem, um.
When did they usually receive before time, eleven twenty-nine?
They do now, uh, once Judge Griffey come along, they sure do.
Sheriff, can you have Mr. Bean, the person in there, he says eleven twenty-nine?
We can.
Smaller dogs?
Yep.
Billy got out here and he got eleven twenty-nine.
We can.
And one of them.
And.
Bob with the double around the jail, but he, he just always in trouble, he never had that chance, you could put him at a place.
That's correct, and here, here's what I run into. Is my, I don't have many misdemeanor sentenced county inmates in my facility anymore, at any given time, I've only got twenty county inmates. Uh, which blows my mind, uh, because used to, we'd have eighty, uh, county inmates to forty, uh, state inmates. Now, it's just crazy, I'm, I'm holding eighty state, eighty to ninety state inmates at any given time, and very few county inmates, uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I'm talking thirty-two visits, that's a pretty good deal, I'm just making some jack on that, something like that. Say ninety-five percent of your state inmates are Henry County inmates, you think?
I do.
That's what you're running back to.
That's correct. Mm-hmm.
Uh, we sent someone over to Benton County, something like that, that don't bother you, they got big four cases here.
Don't bother me a bit, uh, and I know this gentleman won't mind me using his name. So, I had inmate, he had ca- he had Henry County charges, and he had Benton County charges, his name's Jeremy Bluey. Uh, I think he may still be in y'all's facility.
No, he, I got him a, I got him a good work, work job over at, uh, Decatur County.
Okay, so, uh, Jeremy was in my facility, he was in the program, uh, so while he was in the program, we were paying Henry County fines, and we were paying Benton County fines. It doesn't bother us, uh, at all.
Turn your monitoring, I mean, five bucks on the monitoring, I put double, monitor programs. It's costing them forty bucks or something, maybe hundreds of dollars a week.
So, we.
So, five bucks?
Four dollars a day.
Four dollars a day, and who monitors, how's that?
Buddy Bracelet is the company we use, so they're monitoring it, I guess they're monitoring it, but it's all on a, uh, like a geo fence type deal, so. Once they get there, we check them in if they're at work.
Just like a fence for, they send back.
Yeah, and what you got, they've got different monitors set up inside the building. Yeah.
Now, we talk about, or we're talking about, and when you're, how many square foot, should you want to have, or eighty inmates?
Well, I wish I'd, I, I wish you were gonna ask me that, I think it's about five thousand square foot. I could, I could, you gotta have so many square foot per inmate, and it all depends on if you're building dormitory style or single housing style, style. I'm building dormitory style, I'm building eight bare bones, um, I've gotta build it to TCI standards, of course. It will be a metal shell, block interior walls, uh, in essence, it's a minimal security facility, uh.
So, how many, how many big populations are there, there is thirty, you counted?
Uh, thirty-two, just a hair over thirty-two thousand, last census, which I think's wrong, I think the last census is wrong.
It's a fair, that's correct. Uh, I mean, that's why I weigh on one, that's the great thing, actually, you build that, they've got eight, so it might be some more whole cases back here, that's what you did.
Right.
There's only fifteen thousand, six hundred people here, probably four thousand, we don't build stuff too much, and that's not a problem, so it's a great program.
It is great, mm-hmm.
You know, I look at also what it's gonna take to run that facility, does it insurance, you build that facility, would you have to pay a separate insurance, would that add to your insurance by that?
So, that's a question you would have to ask our county budget director, but I don't. I see what you're saying, but I don't think, I don't feel like that it's gonna add that much to us in the grand scheme of things.
Now, I look at the age that I have, so.
Yeah, sure.
What's gonna take?
Yep.
But you see what I'm saying, it's incredible.
Sure.
What do you do that?
Uh, I'm, I'm hoping, keeping my fingers crossed every day, it's, it's sitting at, at Washington for the powers to be the vote on right now, so.
Right.
I do, every one of them's housed inside the jail right now. But, but separate, when I say housed inside the jail, I've got one men's pod that is thirty-two men, and that is the only people staying there is the workers. Those workers don't get mixed and mingled in everywhere else. And then I've got a pod for a, a holding cell that I've transformed into a six-person cell for the women, and they never go in the general population.
Are you saying convicted crime needs to crack right over there?
Yes, sir, uh. I don't know if this is necessarily the reason, I mean, I think it has some of it, but I think there are a whole lot of other reasons that go along with that, uh, crime rate reduction.
I heard you have a good chair over there.
Well, I appreciate that, I have a good team, I'll tell you that, I have a good team.
Sheriff, and the ankle braces that you put on.
Sure.
A lot of those ankle braces, uh, those, those, what they do is they can put a GPS location around that building, they walk outside that building.
That's when we get to start getting attention, that's.
Hey, I'm just looking at, I've got one Detroit.
That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, it's good.
It, it works pretty good.
When you started out, you didn't have this many, you just started off with.
So. We did, so, when they started in twenty eighteen, I think they probably started with ten people or so, um, of course, COVID times hit, um, I got elected during the COVID times, so. We had, when I took over in November of twenty, we had about fifteen people in the program, and then we've had to steadily increase, uh, our number back to get it. But we, since I've been in office and we got out of COVID, uh, we've hung around the twenty to twenty-five mark is where we try to stay, um. Like I said, thirty-two's a lot, and my guy says, I don't want any more, I said, well, you just get ready, if we get that building, you're gonna have a whole lot more.
When they work and they pay back the court calls and things of that nature, you probably don't have a lot of idea of how much work money comes back to the county, does it say?
I couldn't tell you because here's, here's what you, here's what you gotta look at on that, if it's a drug fine. County, I mean, some of it's going to the Sheriff's Department's Drug Fund, um, depending on what it is, a hundred percent of that money could be going to the Sheriff's Department Drug Fund. Uh, but then on the other, what gets sent to the state, what gets kept with, you know, county money, I don't know what that breakdown is. I wish I could tell you that, but I don't, I don't have a clue.
Does anyone else, else have any questions? Okay, Sheriff Rod, thank you for taking your time and coming over here, I, I think you've answered a lot of questions that we've all been wondering about.
Yeah, so I leave y'all those, if y'all have any questions after tonight, feel free to reach out to me, um. I'll answer, if I hadn't answered it tonight, I'd be glad to sit down, if you wanna come over and look at it, we'll show you that too, anytime. Alright, thank you. You don't gotta stay, no, not unless you want to.
Thank you.
The one to serve. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sheriff Christopher, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say one thing, when we say you can cheer up, association did, uh, Tennessee brought all the sheriffs very close together. And we share information just like that when we go to the sheriff's association meeting, it's invaluable, the information we can get and set around, talking to each other. How we fix problems, things like that, and Josh is, uh, rapidly, I believe, sheriff's, but I really do appreciate you taking the time to come over here, help me. I know y'all had a lot of questions about this, and I hope to be answering them. We've done a lot of, uh, employers in this county that call me all the time, wanting to know if we're gonna be discovered, if we do, they know. I'd like to know if we're able to get ten or if we're able to get fifteen or whatever, so the interest is there, the job availability is there.
And it sounds like, you know, we started off in the jail, but now we step up to officers, thanks for that, make sure it's mine, it's mine word, but.
It's the way our jail played out, we just can't take the house from there.
Okay, next, um, you received an email this afternoon from Charlie, and it was from, uh, Richard Key, and it's a two-hundred-and-something page draft. That nobody had time to look at, so he's going to come forward and explain to you what this draft is about, it's the twenty-twenty-four Hazard. Plan for Benton County, Tennessee. Mitigation plan. No, no, he's not going, he's just going to explain this to you, and probably we'll both on approving it next month.
The Hazard Mitigation Plan has to be approved by FEMA every five years. Uh, the state of Tennessee supplies somebody to help write this up. We started this on October the seventeenth with a meeting out at the New Nine-One-One Facility, and another one in December. And he's worked on that since then, it's the first one, and he's got to go through FEMA the first try so far. Because they've changed the way that they do it, it's nothing, anybody that, if we have a disaster. This Hazard Mitigation Plan is what we get to go back to FEMA and say, we do, we qualify to buy something. Uh, if we've got it in here, and you can always add projects to this. And I had, uh, the electric company, the schools, uh, Charlie came from the courthouse, uh. I think some of the police officers over at the city showed up, the mayors of both towns showed up, uh, and it, it has to be. Agreed on or passed through the board, I just wanted to say that that's all this is, it's two-hundred-and-thirty-two pages. Uh, all of them ain't, doesn't have a whole lot on them, a lot of maps and different charts and stuff in there. But it's time for our update, so we got it approved by FEMA pending adoption by the boards. Any questions? You wanna read this?
So, is something we can put off next month?
Yes, it don't have to be done tonight, I just wanted to bring it up to let everybody know, read that email, look through it. It's pretty much, a lot of it is, is similar to what we've had the last five years, or last, whatever, when they started this, it's been quite a while, but. For tornadoes, floods, uh, and things like such as that, then that's where FEMA comes back, and if we've got a project in there that pertains to that, we can get money for it. So, if we don't have a project in there, or if we don't a member of it, then we don't get nothing, kinda like the national flood plan.
Okay, thank, thank you, Richard. Next is the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. And motion and second? Motion by Commissioner Arnold. We have a motion? I don't have one, okay, Marty Douglas. All in favor of approving the minutes from last month's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? There are none, so we move on. There are none, so we move on. The report of the public utilities, motion. Motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Bane. All in favor of the report of the public utilities, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now we're down to our resolutions. Resolution number one is by Mayor Ward to appoint Ron Rogers to the Benton County Board of Equalization. Motion and second, please. Motion by Commissioner Miller and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote?
Number eight on your agenda is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Edsel Blue to the Benton County Solid Waste Board for a three-year term. I have a motion by Commissioner Murphy and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? There are none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote?
Number nine is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Sam Jones to the Benton County Civil Service Board for the remainder of an unexpired term ending on November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions?
We have a gentleman that hadn't been to a meeting in over a year and a half, and he's currently doing the testing for the sheriff's office. And he's not sent in, he's done the testing, but he's not sent any results to the sheriff since September. So. He has to be, I mean, because, uh, he won't talk to the other people on the board. They've emailed him and called him. He won't return their calls. You know, we've put two new members on that board, so we've gotta have somebody that's gonna function properly.
Okay, any other question? If there are none, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number ten is a resolution by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents received from the USDA within the school budgets. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number eleven is a resolution by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of four thousand dollars received as a gift from U Trust to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number twelve is a resolution by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-one cents within the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Anyone have a question? There are none, so please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number twelve is a resolution by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-one cents within the school budget. Is that the one we just did?
Yep.
Okay. Number thirteen is a resolution by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of six, sixteen thousand dollars within the school budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number fourteen is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to move unused funds in the amount of nine hundred dollars within the property assessor's budget to a copper line item for expenditure for the purchase of a state mandated computer upgrade. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions about this one? There are none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number fifteen is a resolution by Commissioners Bane, Price, Hall, and Preston to purchase land in the vicinity of the Benton County Sheriff's Department slash jail for the proposed feature of a county workhouse location. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Preston. Okay, the floor is open for discussion.
Lieutenant Manchin, uh, the sheriff from Henry County, uh, Mr. Frye, Sheriff Frye has given us a lot of good information about their work release program, workhouse program over in Henry County. Um, I'll say that I'm jealous of that. Uh, that's, it sounded like a really, really good program. And there's no reason that we can't have that here in our own county. Yes, we have to walk before we crawl, and we realize that. There is an opportunity to purchase this land next door to the, uh, sheriff's department. Um, there was some question about power lines, water lines, and it's been confirmed those are not a factor. There is a spot there that would easily accommodate a facility. I personally looked at it, and several of you have. I appreciate those of you that have gone out there and looked at it. Uh, I just wanna encourage, encourage everybody to think about this. This is one of the first steps that I think we need to take and, and get this program going. We gotta have a place to put it. We already know since we, like, we voted for the, the fire department money to go in there, you gotta have the land before you can apply for the grants. So I just ask that you consider this, uh, and I'm gonna yield the floor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
You know, and I agree with the sheriff in Henry County. It's a great thing. He's working inside his building. Something like he's making a little money and clearing, giving inmates, inmates a chance, getting court costs paid. But again, like he says, he has thirty-seven thousand people, but they don't get a eighty, what, eighty, twenty grand, a million dollars. Locked up, keep it, how many square foot do you think the scale should be on that land over there? Enough of the house, we're gonna have enough, brother. How many flat dozens? And do we have a grant for, uh, we, we see nothing like that?
We had a grant. It's fire, we have to own the land, same before we apply.
And then we thought the next time, I'll tell you, I will talk about how the jail needs so many other things. We got problems with it already. And really, anybody thinks, you know, jail would be somewhere else to plow toward you, it's like that. That's just the way it is. That's all I already knew before. I always wanted to say that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I appreciate Sheriff Frye, we're helping, uh, several times over in Henry County. We went out there and looked at the property. Yeah, I think it's big enough that we could put a facility. Commissioner Valer's right. I mean, we are half the size of Henry County. Yeah, we have problems with size of Henry County. Maybe, maybe not. Uh, but do we need a program? Yes, I think we do. Is there a facility, or is there a way that we could implement? Uh, and that's something we've had to sit down and talk to the sheriff about. I'm not sure Frye has a pod that he's able to use strictly for that. Uh, how many people do we have in the jail now, Sheriff?
About seventy.
We got seventy, and we're, how many beds are we allowed for?
One forty.
One forty, so. Is, is there a way to shift people around in the jail? That's something the sheriff would have to decide and see if that was something that we could start off with baby steps. And start a small program and see how it works. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of buying the land. It, it kinda doing good by the time. I think, uh, been very profitable to the county. Uh, but this property joins the county, the jail, uh, even then, I'm a firm believer you need to own everything at once, if you can possibly can. And, uh, if we have to do an expansion, we, we got it there. But I think the program, a very good program, and we make it implemented in a very small way, start by. I think it's something the sheriff would have to decide and decide if feasible to. But, uh, it is something that I think would be a benefit, because we do have so many inmates that never does get any kind of court costs or restitution paid. Some of these people he's talking about, uh, I'm familiar with our cases because of the business that I have in the county. And it's turned, turned our lives around by being able to get into those programs. Like, that's why I asked you, is somebody bringing out a loan? No, it's the local citizen in Henry County that's been sentenced. And with Judge Griffey on the bench, all these sentences are getting into their state sentences now. There's not even any plea they're able, they're, they're serving more time. So it gives them an opportunity to pay back at court costs, those fines, restitution, give them a leg up. When they get out of jail, they're able to go to the eye car or get your child support taken. So it is a beneficial program. And I think that the, the law's pretty well be cleared off. I was out there working on the kind of time for water lines. It did look a lot better today than it would out there before we got in the sovereigns. This, this blew a clean doll. I yield the floor.
Anyone else?
I'm talking to a sheriff, I'm reading, yeah, I'm excited to be implemented in the state. There's also, I've been in my real work. I'm for it, but not by land to build a big building, but if anybody tells me I'm small. I'd rather say it out than say for it. I'm reading, I'm rebuilding new jails. But I'm out there, it's been a short bit. I yield the floor.
Anyone else? Commissioner Burke?
I was told in committee that this bill was pulled. We didn't even discuss it in the budget committee. Where the money's coming from, or what one-twenty-seven? I mean, we got a bit money around that we've already got somewhere else, or? I mean, this should've been discussed in the budget committee before brought up here. And we were told it was pulled.
It, it was pulled because of not knowing where the water line was, after the water line was found.
Let me ask you.
Yes.
It was pulled in law enforcement, one, because of the water line, two, because of the cost, and three, because it's gonna cost a million dollars to build a building. We might get a grant, might be eighty, twenty. But we were told that it's gonna take at least eight to ten employees to run a off-site, because it is off-site. So when you look at that, that's six or seven hundred thousand year distance salaries. I don't think it's feasible. I think that's why it was pulled. But I don't know how it got back on there. That, that's one of the reasons. I'm all for a work release program. Everything Mr. Price says is great, but I, I'm, I'm a believer that you gotta take baby steps. And maybe if we really want a work release program, we can start it up in the facility we have and see how it's gonna do. We may only have ten people in Benton County that could even qualify for a work release program. Who knows? But I'm, I'm not against buying the land. Y'all think we need it for future use. But I don't think it's feasible to build a million-dollar building and have another million dollars in the sheriff's budget for COs and all that. I just don't see, looking at, uh, Mr. Frye's numbers, how that could ever pay out.
Work, there's a problem too.
Sir.
We're in the middle of the budget, get, you know, trying to distribute this one to one-twenty-seven. I look down here, you got fifty-five thousand. And we ain't even accounted for in the budget.
That responds, Brett.
Yes.
Brett? I think it was just a resolution. The resolution reads that the money will come out, that county uses it.
One-twenty-seven.
That's the pandemic federal dollar bill.
I know what it means.
Okay, I'll stop there on that. At the twenty-four budget, there was almost two point three, four million dollars in that camp. And I brought the budget with me, but I'm like, yeah, one-twenty-seven, it just disappeared out of me. So I'm gonna go by memory. The budget that was passed that I voted for. There's money from Camp one-twenty-seven and allocated it to twenty-one different projects. Uh, resource officers, there's a large chunk of it, Sadiport Doors, I think, was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two, three other projects at the jail, various other places. Of that, twenty-one projects, about one point nine million dollars from a camp one-twenty-seven leaving you about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that camp. I got the trial balance sheet out of the trustee's office Thursday, so this is good as of this past Thursday. I went to Camp one-twenty-seven, and of that one point nine million dollars that we allocated to twenty-one projects, less than four hundred thousand dollars of that has been spent. Went to almost the tenth month of two thousand and twenty-four, and only four, less than four hundred thousand dollars of that camp has been spent. So what that means, these projects that are done, Sadiport Doors are spent, or we're not using the resource officers. It'll roll over and be there one year, figuring out to twenty-five.
That's, that's what I'm saying, but they still got some money. We're trying to figure out, the sheriff's got some money in there to spend. And he can spend until July. I just said you should've went through committee before then, wrote the resolution.
Thanks for listening.
Commissioner Bane? I'm confused here. We're talking about the money being spent by this land, but yet it's, about it being too much money, but at the same time, I hear y'all talking about building a jail. Now you're really talking some major bucks. From what the sheriff said in law enforcement meeting, we would not need eight COs to run this work program, only four. The workers are gonna be out working during the day. There's no need in having eight COs in this work building. This land is not gonna be available forever. He's already explained, if you were in law court, at the law enforcement meeting, the reasons why you cannot have the workforce in the jail. And you have to have it even, the sheriff from Henry County explained why you have to have it in a separate building and not in the jail or your housing. For not one thing, they have to be kept separate. The work release program inmates have to be separate from the regular inmate. There's no way that you can physically keep them in there, and you can't put them in the basement. That's a fire hazard, for one thing.
You didn't understand. Nobody said it's too much money. I just think, we just need to know that I didn't interrupt that in committee.
It went through, I don't know about budget, but it went through property and it went through law enforcement.
We, we were telling, we didn't discuss.
Yeah, it was pulled from progress. It, it was, went through property with no recommendation. It went through law enforcement and got pulled. So budget didn't get to hear it because it was pulled before they went to budget.
That's all I'm saying.
I did sit in on budget, and Phil, you may wanna fill us in on what your plans were for that, uh, one-twenty-seven money that was allocated for the SROs, because I think it conflicts spending this own land and what you all, the budget committee has planned, but you, you can if you want to, you don't have to.
The line item that the money is coming from, uh, is a line item that budget committee has been talking about trying to get a program started for purchase of vehicles for the sheriff's department. And the money in that line item was to be used as seed money to get the program started. Um, I don't know if the sheriff is, uh, wanting to consider the, uh, program for vehicles or not. This was seriously, uh, you know, the means the money's in that line item, it's taken from that line item to purchase, uh, the property. That is where the budget committee was coming from. Um, is it possible to do the program with that money is expended for a property? Um, we'd have to look at it closely, but there probably could still be something worked out regardless of which way it goes.
Thank you.
I'm still up here speaking, I won't finish now. I'm going to say, I really believe we need to do this. The inmates need the opportunity to have a better life, to change their direction from the path that they have been on. If they can get jobs and be making money. This, along with carry counseling, will be another step toward helping them to get off the, the merry-go-round that they did on. They'll have jobs, they can make money. They can get out, uh, uh, out and still have a job when they finish their sentence. They can take care of their families, they can pay their court costs and fines and, and have a chance to get their lives right. Rocky, you're on speaker.
Rocky, did you, were you on?
I don't want to read names.
That's okay. It means your own if you want to speak.
I didn't answer.
Okay. Okay.
I guess mine timed out.
I think yours.
So this is something.
Okay, now.
Frank's next.
Okay.
All right, this is something we seem to do a lot. It's like, we're voting on an idea without a lot of other concrete information to be added to it. Everybody's on board with the work release. What a great idea, okay? Everybody raise your hand, everybody in favor, aye. Right? The implementation of what we want to do is still a gray area. We're spending fifty-five thousand dollars for a piece of property that you can't even access. I don't know if that's right or not. I'd have to, you know, before Mr. Arnold or whatever. I mean, the only way we get to it is a small, about size of this room, I guess, area right there beside the jail, right? That's, you know, really the only usable area. So if that's, I mean, do we know that's going to work for what we want to do? Do we know what's going to cost to build that or we want to be able to get a grant? How much is that grant? Eighty, twenty, hundred percent YC? See, there's a lot of gray area. We're voting on an idea. Oh, and it looks like we get a lot of resolutions, like we're going to vote for an idea. But ninety percent of it is still in the future without any kind of follow-up, like what we're going to do, you know, next step. I'm in favor of it. Fifty thousand dollars to buy a piece of property for this, you know, program is great. But I'd like to have more information to go forward. It seems we get to these resolutions a lot where it's a great idea, let's vote for it, aye, but we don't know what the next step's going to be or how long it's going to take to get an answer.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, clarify one thing that Commissioner Bynum said, that you could not have it in the jail. Uh, that's false. You can't have it in jail. Here again, it has it in their name. You just cannot have your work release participants in general population. They have to be segregated from other persons. So can you separate them into another pod? Is there a spot in the jail that you can start off with another pod and that's all you ever have? Could be, but you can't have them in the distant facility. If there's room, if the sheriff can shuffle people around, including A pod, B pod, whatever pods it's got. But back to the land part. You know, whether we buy that land for a work release program, is it the best piece of property? No, it's not the best piece of property in the county, I'd say that. Is it that joins us? Yes, it joins. Can it be used for something else in the sheriff department possibility? Uh, while we're in the thinking phases and dreaming phases of building a building, maybe that thing can be used for an inmate car instead of, you know, with raised beds or something, instead of going out to the industrial park where you can't maintain it or have trouble maintaining. Maybe we can use it for something else while we're in the process of building a work release program. But I mean, I might, you know, I think we're all in favor of it. Uh, where the money's going to come from? I don't know, but I think we made some money when we sold the land at the interstate. We gave seventy-five thousand to industrial board, which left us with some money in that account, did it not? Or that we could use that money to reinvent in that land without having to take it out of the line item that you got there. You're throwing mud up on the wall and seeing what's stuck, but that's just a thought.
Could I ask a question to keep? Do you have, have, have you looked at the law to see if you can keep them in general population or not?
You can keep them in general population.
No, I'm asking, I ask a question. Have you looked at the law to see if you can?
I'm going by this one in Henry County, they're in the same jail.
Because we have, I know, I know you keep them in the same jail, but can you keep them in the same general population?
You cannot put them in general population. You've got to separate them in those pods, just like you do in Henry.
I, I'm asking you, do you know the law on that? Because we just invested two hundred thousand dollars on a body scanner. And if you have a body scanner, I don't know why you couldn't scan them in when you bring them back and make sure everything's good. I mean, I don't know. Those questions I have.
You know, it's not you. You know.
I don't know what the law says on that because I haven't.
I don't know what the law says. I know what the facilities are, are used in the work program, they keep us separated because.
And it makes sense.
The thing about it, when the guy goes in here and he's working six, you know, six, ten, and he's needing sleep, and he could have been general population, the people that didn't sleep all day or up all night, they can't rest. So you've got to keep them separated in order to have a good program. Uh, that's just trivial sense. Can you do it another way? You know, they can't always let everybody do it. But, you know, it might be that this is the way that it works for everybody else. It might work better for us though. But I know you can put them in the same facility, you just got to keep them separated. Which is a better program, better idea? Is it the only idea or I have no clue?
Thank you.
One more item on the, one more time.
Okay.
You know, it's just like what he said, there, these, these, uh, these work release inmates will be working all night. They can there be night shifts, every day shifts and things like that, they're supposed to make a little more. Uh, he was talking about, yes, we've got a little money there. We also got to send your citizens to build in an extension and stuff, we've got to get them to that one or two. We don't know where that's going to lead as far as the other wise too. But anyways, it's a great dream. You're right. And like what Burke says, it hasn't, it hasn't went to the better side of it, we just don't know. I mean, you can never settle that. And we're down with myself, we're benefiting from the land and what else provide. You don't know what it's going to take to develop the land, get it lifted in there and done that. I mean, it takes a lot to prepare a site to build it. So anyways, I think work release program, sheriff from Harris, Tennessee was awesome. That, that's, that's awesome. He's got, he's starting to put it, put in there and start building it. In a base, if we've got eighty or seventy in there, we got a hundred and twenty-four. There's got to be a way we can squeeze a ten base section off that we get, you know, ten bases and start off small. If we can't, let's set it on there.
Come in, come in. Uh, Eastern November.
From what I gathered, from who I've talked to and the last time, the facilities, the MTCI last year, they came down, jail inspection. The jail inspector said you would be best off with your work release program separate from the general population, population. In our jail, we have, our pod that had, that was forty-four people. It's a two-tiered, uh, pod. But in that two-tiered pod, you have your new guys that are coming in. And you can separate them by putting your ones on top and the work release program on bottom. And I explained that to Dave Sappel, he said that was the worst side of it. Just separate them to, to where you have your day, your workers on the bottom, tiered for your newcomers. Because your newcomers are coming in, they're detoxing, they're high when they come in, they're rounding in bunches. So you're setting yourself up for your minimum pounds of them together in that bottom.
Also, another thing we've got a problem with there, they're not, sure, showers, uh, clothing, seats and everything down there together. An inmate can go about every day, come back here, get something, he can leave for the next area that he's still in the top. Our jail was built totally wrong. Henry County's is built completely different. That's why they can house us, separate one end of their jail. We don't have that option. I wish we did, but we don't have that option. The way ours is laid out, it is the biggest mess I've ever seen. Everybody that comes in from everywhere is getting out to deal with jails. Who the heck designed this thing? We got a kitchen sink and a deck. There was a bathroom built in there in the middle of the jail and coming into the sheriff's office that has two doors going to a bathroom and not locked on the inside. So nobody ever used that bathroom, like, like you just wanted to free everybody going through there. But whoever laid it out didn't have a faint clue of what they was doing. And that's the kind of crap we're dealing with up there. Uh, it was just not designed properly. So that's why I wish we had a sale. We just don't have one. It's just, I've never seen anything chopped up like that.
Sure. Commissioner Price, you're asked to speak.
What did you say, one? I said, no, I said, you hear that? New jail, build a new facility, really ain't got the best jail in the world right there now. You know, it, it'd be, next thing you know, we'll be building two facilities or three jails somewhere else and wasting all the time on that.
Commissioner Price, you're recognized.
Thank you. Or sheriff from about the female population, could it even be feasible to?
They had to sell the, the one smaller, made sale.
Is the interaction between the population?
They're, they're separated by two different walls. They can't be where they can hear or see. That's why we can't walk inmate in and out of there. Would you want to stay with state regulations? No way to do it. Just like the jail, I've also spoken with our jail inspector, he said, you can't do that. It's just not feasible. And you'd be ten times cheaper if you built all the jail or build a separate place than to try to do something inside what you got. That comes from land that's a little.
Just to remind everybody, this, this is a start. This is the land. We're not talking about building, you know, this great big program, planning it all out. You got to start somewhere. Yes. Mr. Arnold brings up a very good point. You need to control the land around you. This, this vision is, is going to take some due, it's going to have, it's going to take all of us to work together on it. But we got to have the land. We just went through that with the vote of the fire department down here. They had to have the fifty thousand dollars to help purchase that land down there so they can get in the, trying to get some grants. So. Am I for it? Absolutely, one hundred percent. We got to own the land before we can go.
Commissioner Nundberg, did you want to speak?
I did. Uh, Sheriff? I've never been, been there, so this is a question that I'm having trouble understanding. I'm totally for the program. My question is, could we, if we're going to spend some money, spend it on the basement and preparing some sales down there to stay?
No, sir, I've talked to the jail inspector, I've also talked to Bob Bass. He came to focus to all of my point, he could state sex management charge. He said it costs so much to do it and it's not feasible at all. As much trouble as we have getting correctional officers, they can have to go up and down four flights, three or four flights of stairs every, back and forth. So you have to have more people, have them in the basement with them, somebody to sit, or to back five, whatever it might be. And the other thing was, is that, I said, well, somebody mentioned putting an elevator. We talked about half a million dollars to put that in. Who wants an elevator? And the liability for that is the jail. He said, I wouldn't recommend it at all. I don't even think you could possibly do that in a big stand. Jail inspector said it's absolute. That's what, that's the two men that I've talked to. I'll make it off somebody else, that's what they told me and that's what they did.
It just, for me, here, Mr. Frye, he, he talked up there about spending five million or eighty million.
I think that's what he did.
That's, uh, that's scary to me, to think about spending that much.
But as he was saying, the big thing about building all for the jail or adding anything to the existing jail, everything we've got would have to be upgraded.
Sure, I, I agree.
And that is terribly expensive because it's expensive enough anyway. And the way our jail was built, this jail is now sixteen years old. Some of the stuff, the materials that was put in it was twenty-five years old. That was ten years obsolete and it's putting, nobody kept tabs on what was brought in. So lots and things that we don't have replaced, they'll ask us, how old's your jail? Sixteen-year-old. They ain't made dicks in twenty-five years. How did y'all wind up getting them? And I don't know, I, I wasn't sure. So we would really have to do a lot of upgrading for everything. I wasn't even aware of that part when he said that. Y'all would have to cook it up a lot of money if we do it. I don't have any say-so in what y'all do on buying the land or doing any of it. I just want to say this, it's the only direction you can go if you ever wanted the land from there. Because that, behind us, it goes down into that creek back there, there's just nowhere to go. So if there was ever any plans to do anything with this, this jail, it would have to be this land right here. There's just no, no other direction that you can go. Rest of the joint proceeding over there. And that in back is just that creek.
I'm going to recognize Angela Jones from Camden Paper.
Commenting about the problem with late initiation arrangements with the jail. I don't really know, consider this, but the inpatient drug program that we voted to approve and fund last month as part of the requirements of that program, that program wants their people who are in that program to be housed separately. We will jail also. So we have another issue, where are those folks who they know? If they're going to leave the requirements of that program, which wants them to be housed separately within the jail population. So I've heard from what Brock said about all this drug payment funding. It strikes me that this adjacent property, our current jail property might serve purpose and might potentially be funded through some, that drug payment funding. It might, uh, turn that land into some type of privileges of land. Uh, that's just another potential option of how that land might be used. But as I'm saying, y'all have already approved and funded a program that's asked that inmates be separated from the jail. Which we're down here, anything can be.
Anyone else? I think we've had enough discussion. I think it's time to vote. So if you're for this resolution to purchase the land, vote your way.
You know, what's your change your vote?
Can I say something before it votes around? Wouldn't you people know that probably do red, don't change your mind, it's going to fail.
It just takes ten votes, Rocky, because it's not, it's not new money from our unassigned. It's just ten, majority. Okay, we'll move on. Um, we're going to take a ten-minute break before we start back on the resolution. Number 16 on your agenda is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to amend the Benton County Sheriff Department's policy and procedure manual with a passage establishing policy governing the calculation of grant and private-funded reimbursement work details. We have a motion by Commissioner Murphy and a second by Commissioner Nunrie. Any questions on this resolution for the sheriff? Okay, I see none, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Number 17 on the agenda is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $450 received from various sources to proper line items in the sheriff's budget for expenditures. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Anyone have any questions? I see none, so please vote. Number 18 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $7,843.47 received from, excuse me, insurance recovery to an expenditure line item to allow for the proper expenditure of said funds. A motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions? If there are none, so please vote. Number 19 is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to ask authorization and permission from the Benton County Commission to renew a lease agreement with Northwest Tennessee Human Resource Agency's Public Transportation Program for office space at 152 North Forest Avenue in Camden. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions?
Madam Chairman, how long a lease is this?
Three-year lease.
Three-year lease. This up in what we call Old Dale Park.
Yeah, it's $1,500 a quarter.
Any others?
This is for the van transport. Do you still have the nurses program that you transported?
Anyone else? If not, so please vote. Number 20 on your agenda is a resolution by Benton County Sheriff Christopher to amend Resolution 2024-0220-16 pertaining to the Sheriff Department and passed by the Benton County Commission of February 20, 2024 to correct a technical error. Any questions about the error? It's just correcting an error is all we're doing.
It was on the number that's bold on the left. It's just the code number. It's nothing, anything to do with the money.
If there are no questions, everyone please vote. Number 21 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to amend Resolution 2024-0220-30 regarding the appropriation of funds to fund a reimbursable grant for court security correcting an error in the original resolution as passed on February 20, 2024. Any questions for the mayor?
This is what we, y'all passed last month. There was three items on that grant and only two of them were added in. So it's just a dollar amount difference, but it's the same amount that the grant's gonna be paying for.
If there are no other questions, everyone please vote. Number 22 is a resolution, resolution by Mayor Ward to amend Resolution 2024-0220-32 as passed by the Commission on February 20, 2024 to reflect a slight change in monetary amount. Number 16. Any questions? If there are none, so please vote. Number 23 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget TRRD funds in the amount of $225,000 to an expenditure line item in the TRRD budget to allow for the proper expenditure and said funds. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Douglas. Any questions?
Just a comment, Madam Chairman. As most of us know, the TRRD goes, uses this money for all the events, get tourism into the county. Last Saturday, they sponsored a football contest in Bluegrass Pageant. We had over 750 people pay for the holiday last weekend. I had a little group of all of the ways we go to the city. So we had a huge crowd.
This is money that's in their, uh, reserve account. It's not in our reserve account. It's in TRRD's reserve account. They're just moving it from reserve to an expenditure line item so they can fulfill their obligations for the rest of the year. If we get a certain percentage of sales tax because we're an economically depressed county, and half of that goes in the general fund, the other half goes into TRRD to be spent for tourism and, uh, things to bring people in to Benton County to try to help us make more money.
Any questions? If there are none, everyone please vote. Number 24 was Resolution 18 and it has been pulled by the sheriff. Number 25 on your agenda is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $12,000 to legal services line item to allow for the proper funding due to increased expenditures from litigation. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Douglas.
Why are, why are we increasing?
To be honest with you, some of this is from Melton because we've required a lot of him for the last six months. And he's gonna go over what we have allocated in the budget. But the main reason is because I paid the, a portion of the lawsuit fees for my lawyer out of this just so y'all wouldn't have to appropriate money because it comes out of that account. But now it's time to put it back. And we still have a bill out that's gonna be a lot more than this. I think it's around $85,000. Where we pay the sheriff's lawyers. But this is to cover where I paid my lawyer out of that. And James is doing a whole lot of work. He's, he's gonna go over what we have allocated, whether we did that amount. This shouldn't get us through until we get the full amount on the rest of the sheriff's lawsuit.
Any other questions? Since there are none, everyone please vote. Number 26 on your agenda is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $18,450.88 to various line items in the budget to properly compensate affected employees for missed step rates. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote. Number 27 is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $15,000 to the maintenance and repair of vehicles line item to allow for needed repairs. A motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? If there are none, so everyone please vote. This is our last resolution, which is 28 on your agenda. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $10,000 to other contracted services line item to allow for the proper funding of the waste tire account. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions?
I, I said it in the committee meetings, but I'll go ahead and say it again. This is for the fuel surcharge that they're charging us per load now. They have $500 per load just for fuel charges where we didn't have that last year's budget. So not only are we paying to get rid of the tires, we're having to pay the hall bill, which we wasn't doing. So that's the reason we're short. But we, we've got a slip. But we, we've got a solution to that with a tire shredder and all. It's just taking longer to get that taken care of than I thought it would. But we should be able to have that implemented in the next six months. So we, we should be saving about $20,000 a year from, from doing that. It's gonna cost us 10 to get through the rest of this year.
If there are no other questions, everyone please vote. Okay, 29 is appointing notaries. We have three. Kayla Casey, Mary Beth Combs, Miranda Johnson. A motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Bain. Everyone please vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Notaries are approved. Any other business?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to thank the ladies in the egg and seafood hours for providing snacks, popcorn, and drinks and stuff this month. I appreciate it for a month. Thank you for that. Next month, they're gonna run a peanut butter. We won't be able to talk.
Any, any business? There are any, there aren't any other business, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Melton. All in favor of adjourned, say aye. Is anyone opposed? We are adjourned. We're adjourned.